Good evening and welcome to the February 6, 2018 Fiscal Year 2019 Annual Operating Budget Public Hearing of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I would like to ask everyone to turn off any wireless communication devices as they interfere with the microphones and taping of the meeting. Thank you. Mrs. Berkeley, please call a roll.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boston?
Present.
Mr. Burrows?
Ms. Uvanks?
Here.
Ms. Hernandez?
Present.
Mr. Murray? Mrs. Cantaro-Strady?
Present.
Mrs. Rose?
Here.
Mr. Valentine?
Here.
Mr. Wallace? Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Dr. Weisman? Ms. Page? Dr. Uvanks?
Thank you. The Board of Education has convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving public commentary on the fiscal year 2019 budget. The Board of Education is scheduled to adopt its budget at the February 22, 2018, board meeting that will begin at 7:05 PM. The recommended budget will then be forwarded to county executive Mr. Resheran Baker, who will develop his proposed county budget and present it to the county council in March of 2018. The county council must adopt the budget, which includes school system funding designated by category, and then it goes to the state legislature in April of 2018. The Board of Education will then reconcile with the county approved budget, and it will be adopted at a regularly scheduled meeting in June of 2018. Colleagues, we would now hear from our registered speakers for public comment, who will speak for three minutes in a public comment forum where the board will listen to their comments. And there are two microphones on both sides of the aisle for your convenience. I think it's two. Or is it one? They're just going, okay, so, I'm sorry, correction. Just go right up there to the podium, right there, there has the microphone. Our first registered speaker for this evening is Noah Millhouse. Noah Millhouse, second grade student at Philistine Williams Spanish Immersion. Please come forward.
Buenas noches, Dr. Maxwell, Dr. Uvanks, and members of the La Junta Escolar. Hola. My name is Noah Millhouse and I'm in second grade in Philistine Williams Spanish Immersion School. Gracias por permitir que los programas de inmersión en español continúen. Gracias por permitirnos a mí y a otras personas aprender español. Lo que más me gusta de aprender español es que puedo hablar con otras personas en un nuevo idioma. También me gusta que estoy mejorando al hablar, leer, y hablar con personas de países de habla hispana. Cuando crezca, crezca, podré ayudar más y contarles sobre Dios. También pienso aprender a hablar muy bien en japonés, árabe, francés, mandarin, y portugués. Gracias por darme la oportunidad de aprender español. Es un dibujo muy divertido de aprender. Por favor, visítame en la clase de tal de señora Padilla para que puedes aprender español conmigo. Tranquilízate.
Thank you. Mr. Millhouse is also a chess player for Philistine Williams Spanish Immersion. They play every year at the American University. So next year, if you can, I'd like to take the opportunity to go there and watch these young scholars, first grade and second grade compete in a chess tournament. Next speaker is Kimberly Middleton. We'll come back. Rebecca Muse. Is this Muse?
Good evening, board. My name is Rebecca Muse and I am here from Maya Angelou French Immersion. I'm here to talk about two very critical positions at our school. The first one is a full-time IB coordinator for our primary years IB program. As you know, Maya Angelou French Immersion is an IB program, and we worked very hard to gain that status in the county. The school district is working to compete with the middle years program at the school for fiscal year 2019. In order to complete this process, the school must have an IB middle school coordinator, as required by the IB National Office. If this position is not approved, we risk the continuity of the program, and it could possibly be lost, which will result in wasted time and once again pushing our critical programs that service our children back to mediocre status. The next thing I want to talk to you about is the need for Maya Angelou to have a full-time nurse on staff. I have two daughters that are sitting in the back of this room that attend Maya Angelou French Immersion, and it concerns me that we have gone without a full-time nurse for so long. This year, a viral outbreak affected our school and over 100 students were sent home in one day. With no full-time nurse on duty to assist in addressing this issue, resources and teachers and administration were pulled out of classrooms affecting instructional time. This is something that happens on a daily basis at our school. Our teachers are pulled from the classroom to deal with illnesses because we do not have a full-time nurse on staff. Parents are repeatedly reminded that health and safety of our school population is most important. With this being the case, it is my hope that you will assist us in getting a full-time nurse at Maya Angelou French Immersion immediately. The school nurse not only supports student success by providing health care through assessment, intervention, and follow-up for all of our children. They address the physical, mental, and emotional and social health needs of students as well as support their achievement and learning processes. Such skills is critical for our student body to foster a healthy and productive school community. I thank you for listening, and we are now begging that you all help us get a full-time nurse at our school immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert McNair?
Good evening, board chair, board members, Dr. Maxwell. My name is Robert McNair, and I am speaking as an individual. I am here this evening to ask you to approve the enhancement of the Restorative Practices Pilot Initiative. Programs in education tend to come in like a trend, and with them come various circusy trainings of mechanical processes educators go through without any real change. Restorative Practices is not a program. It is not one that calls for a one or two-day training, and then the person goes back into their buildings to teach their colleagues. It involves intensive trainings of all staff in a school environment, which results in the shifting of the paradigm in the way we do things. It also involves ongoing professional development in strategies that are supportive in maintaining and sustaining a restorative culture. The enhancement will allow the pilot schools to continue to build greater capacity in their schools and continue to move with fidelity in the initial implementation stages of restorative practices in the schools. Once again, thank you so much for allowing this Restorative Practices Initiative to come into fruition, but I'm asking you to please approve the enhancement that it's going to take to bring this amazing process into those seven pilot schools with fidelity. Please trust the process. Thank you.
The next speaker, I apologize in front for this pronunciation of the first name. I'm not really sure. So is Martas Henderson?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I thank you for hearing the thoughts of parents and community members at this and the other budget hearings. We not only want better schools for our children, but we recognize the positive impact that a strong school system can have on the future of our county. Strong schools attract development and attack space to support additional growth. To that end, I'd like to advocate on behalf of one of the county's most unique, innovative, and successful programs, our immersion schools, which offer parents who are globally minded and keenly aware of the benefits of multilingualism an awesome opportunity at levels unmatched by surrounding suburban jurisdictions. I urge you to capitalize and expand on the success of our French programs by doing the following. Fund the expansion of the Spanish and Mandarin programs to continue through middle school. Consider the creation of an immersion high school that would house all of the foreign language immersion students from every language under one roof, and provide an additional secondary school option for students in the county's IB middle years or other programs who were not able to attend an immersion school but are interested in education with a global focus. Continue to fund the IB program at Maya Angelou French Immersion through middle school and expand the IB program to the other immersion schools, particularly the other French immersion program at George Kennedy. On a side note, I also call for better oversight of our curriculum. Each year, we seem to receive English language textbooks at the French immersion school. We do not use them. Figuring out how not to waste money ordering certain texts for the immersion programs seems like a common sense way we can help the county save valuable funding. Finally, I ask you to consider smart alignment of immersion programs. I've noticed that some of the immersion programs in the south of the county are undersubscribed and had to hold a second lottery to try to attract students. Meanwhile, the program in the northern area of the county has a waiting list. If the numbers hold true, it may be worthwhile to expand the program in the areas where it is in demand, where it is wanted. It may mean that one program is larger than the other, but if the students who truly want to have an immersive education, whether they be in the south or the north area of the county, have access to that, having a different volume of students should not be a problem. Around the world, more than half of people, or half of people, estimates vary between 60 and 75%, speak at least two languages. Thank you PGCPS for ensuring that some of our children are not in the minority of world citizens who are monolingual. Please consider expanding immersion so that it is available to more children at an earlier age, when acquiring language is easier, and when the benefits of bilingualism for the brain can be achieved soon. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Laura Rammelsberg?
Good evening, board members and Dr. Maxwell. I'm a member of the Dora Kennedy French Immersion School PTA Legislative Committee. Dora Kennedy is a public specialty school which is overseen by the Office of Immersion Programs. Dora Kennedy currently has 650 students from grades kindergarten through eighth who come from cities across the northern part of the county. Maya Angelou is our sister school and is a French immersion school that serves the southern part of the county. I ask that you approve the current budget submitted by the Office of Immersion Programs. I also have a few additional requests based on an online survey of our PTA members, which I would like you to consider. The school-based budget formula is being applied to Dora Kennedy and the other immersion programs must take into account their expanded school populations. In 2013, Prince George's County Public Schools expanded Dora Kennedy to accept 100 kindergarteners yearly, up from a limit of 75. As a result, Dora Kennedy needs an additional teacher every year to accommodate this expansion. In FY 2019, an additional fourth-grade teacher must be funded, but funds are also needed to hire additional specials and school staff to serve the larger school population, which has grown by 125 students since the expansion began. Teacher retention is important for the immersion programs. The time and cost of recruiting teachers who meet both the language requirements and teaching requirements is challenging. Offering teachers competitive salaries and adequate staff increases would help retain our teachers. Teacher training and support should also be made a priority. Many immersion program teachers are not originally from the United States. This cultural diversity is wonderful, but it also brings challenges. For example, the pedagogical, I can't say this word, pedagogical training in one country might be very different than the training in the United States. The Office of Immersion Programs would benefit from having one or two coaches in their main office to help teachers in the immersion programs be the best educators that they can be. Adequate classroom staff is an issue for many county schools. More paraprofessionals are needed to help overwhelm kindergarten teachers. Dora Kennedy also needs French reading specialists. This school year, we were fortunate to have one French reading specialist who came to us as part of a French government exchange program. That specialist will not be at Dora Kennedy next year since Maya Angelou will be doing that exchange. We'd like to request funds for one or two more reading specialists at the K through two, for our K through two students. Thank you.
Thank you. Leave a copy. Jamie Apperson Camo, pronounced correctly? All right. I know you just Jamie.
Yes. Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Maxwell, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jamie Apperson Camo. I live in Hyattsville. I have one daughter who currently attends Hyattsville Elementary and Kindergarten. I'm also the secretary of the Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee for Prince George's County, or CCAP. For those of you who may be unfamiliar, Maryland, um, Amar, Dada, requires each school system to establish a special education citizens advisory committee made up of parents and stakeholders to help advise the school system on the needs of students with disabilities within its jurisdiction. And it's in this capacity that we wish to address the school. Looking at prior budgets, staffing in the special education department has not kept pace with increasing numbers of students in each special education services. Those numbers increased by 471 students between 2012 and 2016. This year, staffing increases by only one net position. A teacher trainer position is lost, while supervisor and instructor are added to assist with PGCPS's compliance with state law limiting suspensions for K through 12 students. In other jurisdictions, for instance, I've been working in Charles County, where they've reported an influx of special education students from surrounding jurisdictions. And over the past couple of years, they've made repeated requests to their Board of County Commissioners for additional funds for staffing for special education teachers and additional staff. Montgomery County Public Schools is proposing spending an additional 4.4 million to increase staffing by over 70 FTE positions. And Charles County Public Schools, which has approximately one-fifth the population of Prince George's County, is adding five additional staff members. Staffing in special education in PGCPS has remained steady or declined slightly over the past three years since special education was realigned under the Associate Superintendent for Special Education and Student Services. The proposed budget approved would be the first time staffing is increased by that one net position rapidly increased. CCAP would like for us, the board, to consider additional funding to provide additional staff for special education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tommy Macula?
Good evening. My name is Tommy Macula. I am from Acquahkeet. And my son attends school here at Oxon Hill High School. He's in the Science Connect Program. And just for the record, I'm here quite often and probably sound like a broken record complaining always. For the record, I can say that my son is receiving a great education here. He's being challenged and doing quite a lot, so I do want to make that clear. On the budget, I have three points, kind of repeating some of the things that I've been talking about here for four years and during before the budgeting process began, but it's very important and I want to repeat them and remind you about those again. So two of those relate to the process of budgeting. As you may know, for the past two years, for the previous two years, we had a question and answer session, an organization I'm involved with, the British International County Advocates for Better Schools. We worked with the Budget Office to have a Q and A session, and I think it was very helpful because various, really, as you know, in this budgeting process, really no opportunity for us to ask questions about the budgets and hefty document, a lot of things that are not self-explanatory. So I think that was important. Unfortunately, this year, we were not able to do it due to some snap turnover and snow days and other things with the Budget Office, but I hope that that kind of an event is really baked into the budget process in the future because I do think it is important. The other process-related comment I have is that I do believe that this is great to have public engagement at this stage, but at this stage, of the other, the budget document is really a wish list and everybody kind of knows it. But the really more important point in time when it comes to the budget and discussion about it is really when you reconcile, what you get funding from the different government, it is the state and the county toward the end of the process. And so I hope the last year, there was some public engagement at that stage, and I felt that I believe that was the first time that it happened, and I think it was very helpful. That's when it really counts. So I hope that this happens again because that's when you're really making the big decisions. Now you're deciding what's going to be on the wish list. So that's not really that important a transgene thing. Then again, the more on the substance side, I will again repeat my request. I hope you closely track how much money, what the trend lines are, and how much money is going to the classroom for instructional salaries is probably a good measure for that. That is really what matters, I think. Realize that it's exciting to launch all these new programs and things, but I think at the end of the day, what really matters is how much money is going to the classroom. And I do think that also ties with my concern that I do think we have some really great specialty programs here. We also need to focus on the neighborhood schools and comprehensive schools. Every student gets a quality education. I believe that's where the money going to the classroom really matters, not necessarily the great, any program. Thank you so much. What do you have?
Thank you. Gina Parker? Ms. Parker? Amity Pope? Ms. Pope? Gerard Tyler?
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell, board. I'm here as a parent again of Maya Angelou French Immersion program where my daughter is a scholar there. I'm here in regards to really advocating for our school to have a school nurse. I think my legislative co-chair Rebecca, in her earlier comments, really identified the issues that we're having in the school where we had this year outbreak where 100 kids were sent home in a single day. In our school currently, our teachers, when we don't have adequate school nurses, our teachers are playing the role of school nurse, which again takes away from instructional time. I'm not 100% sure as to what is the issue of getting a school nurse in our school. I don't know if it's a recruiting issue. I don't know if it's a retention issue. What I'm asking you as a board to really look at the budget to make sure that the salaries for school nurses are comparable because health and safety is really our primary goal in our school outside of education. And I want to make sure that not only our school has adequate nurses, but all the schools in our county should have that. I think that's fairly reasonable. I don't think that's a big ask. So as we are preparing to vote on the budget and look at it, I'm asking you to please ensure that all the tools are there to ensure that all of our schools have adequate nurses in the school, and I will greatly appreciate that. Thank you. What do you have?
Thank you. Gina Bowler? Is that here? Kent Roberson?
Hold on, I brought security just in case. This is my son, Kent Roberson. Saw you with him.
Estoy a favor of una enferma.
Okay. And what he said was, please help us get a school nurse. He goes to the school, and I thank God that, so he goes to Maya Angelou and my youngest son Kendall goes to John Hansen Montessori. And so the issue is, especially when you have a nurse, I know it seems like it's a big deal, but my youngest son who suffers from asthma has to go to the nurse at least once a month. So I'm just glad that he's not at my oldest son's school because if he did, you actually have to have somebody there who can actually administer the medicine. You just can't have anybody. You just give it to them. So that's an issue. So we really need to pay attention to that. As far as Maya Angelou's concerned, I'm pushing for that. As well as a paraprofessional for those kindergarten through second grade level, especially our kindergarten schools. We also know that our windows are promised to be replaced at our school and that we have to be done. So I want to make sure that that's on the radar, that we need our windows done. They were supposed to be done last summer and before that, before that. And so that continues to be put on the back burner. So I want us to look at that, as well as the security cameras in the area. Our space is being limited, although we said that we are trying to grow and expand our program at Maya Angelou. Problem is, we don't have space. We actually have, my son is going to be in class that they converted from a dance studio into a classroom. So there's no windows in the classroom. So that's a big issue for him. And I of course want to advocate for our teachers because they are so dedicated to our children. This is the reason he can stand up here and speak French the way he does. And so we need to be dedicated to their salary increases as well. And then at John Hansen, I want to point out that that is one of the schools that's been identified with the lead problems there when it comes to the water. And they are still, actually both schools, they still drink out of the Deer Park Water fountain. They don't use the actual water there. And it's important that we look at John Hansen because everything is integrated into what they do. So water is integrated into their teaching style. So you know, when they come in, they wash their hands. And it's not only just them washing their hands because they have the sink there, but it's so much integrated into teaching them, this is where water comes from in the life cycle. So imagine just, you know, from rain going down to the ground, to groundwater, all of that. There's so much in their teaching style that is just part of their curriculum. So that's really something that is just beyond what you go to using the restrooms and washing your hands, but it goes beyond that. So that's why I want to make sure that that's on your radar as well to get fixed. Once again, good to see you, Ms. Williams. Good to see you, Mr. Valentine, and the rest of the board. I always am glad to see you all, and thank you so much for all that you do for our students. Have a good one. Dr. Maxwell, keep it up. We thank you for funding these special education schools because I know that's important. That's one thing you have done for us, to advocate for specialty schools. We appreciate that. Thank you all. Have a good one.
Thank you. Daniel Brown?
Good evening. I am a teacher at Hyattsville Elementary School. And I wanted to comment on the discussion that's had earlier about challenges facing the building maintenance. We heard the system-wide difficulties that are occurring. I just wanted to call attention to Hyattsville. Our school is an old school. We only have two staff bathrooms, one for men, one for women. Both of the toilets leak and form big puddles onto them. I've been told that the repair order for one of them has been in for two years and nothing has been done. This situation is unsanitary, it's unsafe, and it's unacceptable. So please work on fixing that. I don't know, as was discussed earlier about hiring people or training, but you know. As was discussed earlier about hiring people or training, but, you know, this should have been fixed long ago and it's still a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Shay Newman?
Good afternoon. My name is Shay Newman and my son attends school at Andrew Jackson Academy. I'm here to testify on three issues that, two of them we need, three of them we need for the school and one just in general. The first issue is, last month, my son, they lost his, um, implant battery, which costs over two hundred dollars. Last year, they lost his entire implant system, which costs over seven thousand dollars. And then before that, his hearing aid was lost, which cost between five and fifteen hundred dollars. So I'm asking for some kind of reimbursable program when the school loses this medical equipment, um, that the parents can be reimbursed for something, not necessarily everything, but something. Because my son is in the third grade. He has another five years at that school and we've lost over eight thousand dollars worth of equipment. Um, the other issue is the playground. The playground needs, the wood chips need to be pulled up and they need to put down rubbery surface in the playground because this is where some of the, um, implant equipment may or may not be lost. Um, there are currently thirty-three deaf children there, but there have been, at, at the height, I think it's fifty. So this is the concentrated population for the deaf children in the entire county where only my son can go. He can't go to no other school in the county. So they need to do something about making the school accessible for this deaf population. The other, um, issue is, um, this summer, the school got a brand-new HIVAC system. But we still having the same issues. My son's classroom is between eighty and ninety degrees. This was not a new issue, but you put in a new HIVAC system, but we're still having the same issue. So I don't know who's doing the Q and A on this, who's paying the contractors after, um, they installed the equipment. But somebody needs to go back out and check the equipment to make sure it's balanced properly before they give the final payment to the contractor. Lastly, I would love to see a deaf mentoring program. This is being done in New Mexico. Since the school system took over the infant and Todd program from the county, uh, Health Department, um, there needs to be some kind of deaf mentors that go out with the families and teach hearing people what it is to be deaf. And, um, in other states, sometimes they charge back to Medicaid. And this could be done from zero to five years old because currently the infant and Todd program is great. The teachers are great, but they're all hearing. So they really can't tell a hearing parent how to deal with deaf issues. Only a deaf person can tell, uh, another deaf person's struggle. So.
Thank you. Excuse me, um, Ms. Newman, which school may you refer to?
Andrew Jackson is kindergarten through eighth grade. Uh, Kingsford is infant and Todd preschool. And right now I think the deaf children for high school are at Illinois. I don't think there's any kids in front of you.
Who is the one? Is, what program, uh, you don't know what program you're referring to?
Um, the Deaf and Hard of Hearing Program for the entire county where the students come from anywhere.
That was done in another county.
Um, it's called a deaf mentoring program where they, there are like deaf individuals who go around with the infant and Todd teachers who are hearing. And when they do the home visits, you have a deaf person that you can sit and ask questions about grinding teeth. Is this normal or something like that? So New Mexico has a program that it's been bought up at the EDD group that I go to, the Early Hearing Detection Group at the State of Maryland. And I saw a few other places, but New Mexico charges back the Medicaid some.
Okay, thank you. Jamila Woods?
Good afternoon, Dr. Maxwell and members of the Board of Education. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you. I come with, um, a few specific requests, um, that we really consider as we talk about, uh, budget line items for our schools. First of all, I would like to propose that we consider providing mental health first aid certification, uh, training for all teachers and support staff in the Prince George's County school system. So many people are well aware of the benefits of CPR and how CPR can perform, uh, life-changing, life-saving services performed by laypeople. However, many are not familiar with the fact that mental health first aid certification can also provide life-saving, uh, assistance by laypeople who learn how to assess and probably address someone who is dealing with a mental health challenge. I believe that Prince George's County should rise to the level of other schools in other, uh, states like New York where this has become a priority. And I would ask that you would strongly consider that as a line item in your budget. Also specifically in this Legislative District Twenty-Six, I want to know that we are making line items to make sure that schools such as Clinton Grove Elementary School and Christ Crossland High School receive the extremely needed renovations, uh, so that the students can thrive and survive. As it relates to Crossland High School, I am particularly concerned about the fact that they continue to sell food during athletic events outside without running water, which is against the law. The other thing that I'd like to talk about is, uh, that we look seriously consider, uh, re-engaging in this community school programs here in Prince George's County so that we can assure that our students take place. And needless to say that we see an increase in salaries for teachers in the county. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Jim Cullen?
Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Maxwell, um, you know me, I'm a frequent guest, uh, and Jim Cullen with, uh, representing the Paraprofessional Six Thousand, uh, school system, ASAP Global for twenty-two fifty. And it was, uh, I was glad to hear, uh, you know, the statements about the paraprofessionals and nurses and the need for that. Those are, uh, many of the members we represent who are providing really vital services, uh, to the children and families of the school district. And, you know, they are, you know, when you don't have one in every school, that means that folks are running and, and they are stressed. So I would certainly support, uh, you know, the need, uh, uh, to provide, uh, um, more of those services in the district. You know, as you're preparing your budget and discussing the two thousand nineteen budget, I want to just encourage you, and you've heard me say it before, that you ensure that this budget contains the necessary resources to honor our collective bargaining, uh, agreement. Uh, it should contain no less than the resources commensurate with other agreements that have been negotiated for, uh, employees for, uh, the upcoming fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Uh, for example, the, uh, PG CBA. We did negotiate the, the wage, uh, uh, reopener last year. We appreciate that and that was, uh, that was a positive step. Uh, but we're still waiting to get to the table, been requesting, uh, to negotiate, uh, for, uh, next fiscal year and beyond, uh, as our current, you know, CBA expires on June thirtieth and, uh, we would hope that, uh, you know, ELR will sit down with us, uh, immediately to begin those, uh, discussions. There's a lot of issues and, and we hope we can make progress and, and continue to work collaboratively. Um, you know, so we want to, you know, ensure that the support professionals have a voice and are fairly accounted for in this budget process. We, and we want to work with you to build on the progress from last year. I also want to bring to your attention the important work that members, our members provide, uh, into the fore and after school extended learning program. Uh, we want to make sure that the budget supports that vital work, uh, as well, uh, because they provide a vital service to, uh, the children of PG CPS. Uh, they brought to our attention that dozens of, of the programs, uh, have actually been outsourced to vendors over the last few years, uh, which, uh, you know, is, is concerning, uh, to us. Uh, and, and we ask, um, you know, again, it concerns us because they provide a quality service, uh, and they provide continuity, uh, uh, for children, uh, for, for the children of the district and they also, it's a revenue generator as well, right, uh, for the district. So we ask that you support, uh, this important program and the services our members provide, uh, as you, um, make the final decisions on this, uh, fiscal two thousand nineteen budget. Uh, thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. Elizabeth Young?
Hiya, how are you? I'm a teacher from Samuel Chase Elementary, um, which is in Temple Hills. And we would like a new school. In two thousand and fifteen, we were up for a new building. But we, um, we are a pre-K through five school with, um, two hundred and ninety-one students. Um, in two thousand and fifteen, we were taken off the list because we were only utilizing seventy percent of our building. And now we're almost to, um, a full capacity of usage of our building. We have grown by, um, five percent of our students over the past five years. And our, um, teacher population, which is now twenty-one, has grown by twenty-three percent within the last five years. We need a new building to serve our many students and growing body of families in our area. In two thousand and fifteen, again, I said we were taken off the list. We would like to be put back on that list. These children are deserving of a new school. We've had mold problems. Um, our maintenance department has told us that we have asbestos in our school and our ceilings behind our lamps and our common areas. Um, we have outdated blackboards that we can't even use, our chalkboards we can't even use. We have to cover them up with paper because they're unusable. We can't write on them. Um, our classrooms are outdated and, and, and old and dirty. We need new cabinets, um, that are built into our walls. And we just need a whole new building. Um, our technology is lacking in our building because it's so old. Um, on another note, um, I also support early childhood education. I'm an early child educator. Um, I have a master's degree in early childhood education. Um, so I, um, support learners from pre-K to, um, age, um, to grade three. I support having preschool, age three, and pre-K, age four, at all Title One schools. We need to give our young learners and these, um, a head start to prepare them for kindergarten. Um, in kindergarten, when they, in their kindergarten, they have to know five sight words, know their letters and know their sounds. And, and, um, they need to show, um, book handling experience. If they are not, um, having these opportunities to do that, then they come into kindergarten below grade level. And when you're below grade level, usually continue on below grade level. You start at, on below grade level and it's really hard to catch up. You just keep going until the next grade level, below grade level, or they hold you back and then, um, you repeat the grade. Um, so, um, as a pre-K teacher. Oh, time? Okay. So we need pre-K and preschool in all Title One schools to support our early learners. And we want a new school at Samuel Chase.
Thank you. Erica, Erica Staples?
Good evening, Dr. Maxwell and members of the board. My name is Erica Staples and I want to thank you for implementing and supporting language immersion programs and to encourage you to continue to support the program enhancements in the proposed fiscal year nineteen budget. As the daughter of Panamanian immigrants who was both raised in an environment with exposure to two different languages and cultures and attended an immersion school, I've had the benefit of being able to fairly effortlessly traverse two different worlds. So I knew that I would also seek a similar opportunity for my children when the time came. Unfortunately, when that time came in twenty-ten for my eldest child, there were no such programs in Prince George's County. Luckily, things have changed and I'm ecstatic that my second child has the opportunity in, that, that opportunity. In just four months, I've seen my son Jamison, a kindergarten nerd, Phyllis E. Williams, go from only knowing the phrase adios amigos to counting in Spanish as he does his daily push-ups, helping his older brother who didn't have the benefit of an immersion program study for his Spanish test, and as of last night, even reading in Spanish. Studies have shown that learning another language has multiple benefits that transcend speech. But surprisingly enough, learning Spanish has also helped my son Jamison to read English better. These accomplishments are all great, but if the program is not continued through middle and high school, these amazing accomplishments and the opportunity to have more generations of multilingual people will be lost. In order for Prince George's County in the United States, one of the melting pots of the world, to be able to continue to grow and compete in our ever-changing global landscape, we have to prioritize language and cultural education. In many other countries, including Panama, every child has to learn English as well as their native language. Not to mention children in Montgomery, Arlington and Fairfax Counties. Our neighboring counties have the luxury of numerous schools with extensive language immersion programs that extend from kindergarten through high school and that teach multiple languages, including Japanese, Korean and German. Quite honestly, Prince George's County is actually lacking in, in language education. Aren't our kids worthy of those resources and opportunities as well? Yes, they are. My hope is that one day, every child enrolled in PG County will have the opportunity to receive a language immersion education if they so choose. And with your support and brilliant minds, I know that, that it's possible. Thank you for your time. Consideration and support.
Thank you. If you have some remarks, if you want to leave it, it's birthday. Also, Ms. Young, if you had some, I, I saw you have some papers I didn't have you on this. So this now concludes the February sixth, twenty sixteen fiscal year twenty nineteen operating budget public hearing. Where everyone have a safe, uh, and, and, uh, travels home or to their destination and have a good evening. Thank you.